Before we do the roll call, I'm going to ask that we observe a moment of silence in honor and memory of former President George H.W. Bush. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burns?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Let the record show that all council members are present. Next item, item number two, is minutes. You should have received a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If there are no one, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Next item is presentation. We have one presentation tonight, not necessarily from council, but from the parliamentarians group. So, somebody, please come forward, tell us who you are, and do your presentation to this, memory of Ms. Kathy Lives.
Good evening. This is council of Forest Park and Reverend, Brother Charles Johnson, the mayor. The Queen City Unit of the National Association of Parliamentarians, whereas Kathy L. Lives, PRP/MMC, Professional Registered Parliamentarian, Master Municipal Clerk, retired. Our organization stopped by to pay homage to the great woman, who once served as your great master municipal clerk, to the city of Forest Park, to the mayor, Charles Johnson, and to the Forest Park City Council. We thank you for sharing Kathy with us. Her knowledge and expertise in parliamentarian procedures was invaluable. Whereas Kathy L. Lives, in the year 2000, earned the distinction of Registered Parliamentarian, and in 2004, the designation of Professional Registered Parliamentarian. And in the same year, Kathy was voted Clerk of the Year by the membership. Kathy was a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians, Ohio Association of Parliamentarians, president of the Queen City Unit of the National Association of Parliamentarians. Kathy continued to study the parliamentary procedures through all these organizations until her demise. Kathy has presented workshops on parliamentarian procedures to the local governments, officials, and to the public. Kathy served as a parliamentarian for various organizations in the greater Cincinnati area. Be it resolved that on behalf of a grateful organization, the National Association of Parliamentarians, to the memory of a great woman, Catherine L. Lives, we present this book of pointers, hoping that it will be used as a reference book to all, along with Robert's rules. To Mr. David Lives and family, we thank you for sharing Kathy with us. She will forever be in our hearts, along with the skills that she taught us, done by the order of the National Association of Parliamentarians. Clarence W. Harris, President, QCU. Thank you.
You're gonna bring this around to the mayor? You're just gonna stand there?
What does the parliamentary procedure say?
Always give him a chance.
Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you for Kathy. Appreciate it.
Sounds like we'll do this here.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Does, um, try everything?
I don't know if he does.
You don't?
I do. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Clarence.
Mayor Johnson and the members of the Forest Park City Council and guests, I am Robert Rosell. I am currently the president of the Ohio Association of Parliamentarians, as well as the immediate past president of Queen City Unit. I also want to honor Kathy tonight. We've already spoke about the fact that she has been an outstanding clerk. That is probably where you have had your greatest experience with her. My experience with her as a fellow parliamentarian is through our professional involvement. She obviously also has been a past president of the Queen City Unit of Parliamentarians, and has been a tireless partner in organizing workshops and other events to help get the word out on parliamentary procedure and how to execute it, and how to make it actually something that will help improve your meetings. From a personal level, I remember her personally as the unit vice president the two years that I served as unit president, from 2016 to 2018. As somebody who lives in Dayton and was just recently engaged in the Queen City Unit, I came in as president with not a whole lot of history associated with Queen City. And Kathy was absolutely instrumental in providing me endless support. She provided me invaluable advice and guidance, not only about the unit, but about how the unit has been performing, both internally and externally. She's never hesitated to help me in that role, and certainly she's helped other members of the unit as well. But we also recognize Kathy is devoted to her family and her faith, in addition to her profession. And sometimes, I don't know if we give enough emphasis to how important faith and family is, but that's what made Kathy really special, above and beyond just her being an associate and a friend. And I think we can speak, I can speak for the unit and the state association in saying we'll miss her very much, and we wish her husband, Dave, and her family the best. I will miss her and do my best to honor her memory, both in my chosen profession and my life as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and on behalf of the city and the members of council, this means a great deal to us, both professionally and personally, and to Dave, to you and your family. Personally, I think you know how much Kathy meant to me, and I know how much she meant to the city, and as was said, we're gonna miss her. I'm gonna miss her. I do miss her. But if I gave it very much thought, I would have to say that I'm sure she's there looking now and saying, Chuck, you might should have said that a different way. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council, or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address council? I think you would come forward and sign in, please. And before they do their presentation, this is also the time when others in our office may feel free to take your leave. Don't feel badly, we won't. And you're free to stay with us if you want to, but that is your choice. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and Council of Forest Park. Thank you so much for taking time to hear me speak this evening. My name is Angie McDonald, and I work for an organization known as 4C for Children. My colleague, Amy Van Verth, has presented each of you with a folder with some information that will summarize what I'm sharing, and my contact information, should you have any questions after tonight's session. The reason that I'm here tonight and my work with 4C for Children is with small business owners all across the city. Specifically, those business owners are of childcare programs. For C for Children, our role in the community is to support childcare programs in achieving higher levels of quality, so that we can better serve our children and help them be prepared for kindergarten and life beyond. Our other role at 4C for Children is to support families in connecting to quality childcare. In the state of Ohio right now, there is a program called Step Up to Quality. It's how we in Ohio rate childcare. It's how we determine what quality is. It's a measure that is given to us by the state, and 4C's role is to support childcare providers in implementing that in all of their settings. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the information that may be of concern for all of us. I don't know if any of you saw WCPO over the weekend, but there was a news story that talked about how, in the state of Ohio, all childcare providers must have a minimum of a one-star rating by June 30th of 2020. Well, in the city of Forest Park, we know that there are currently 53 childcare providers. And of those 53 childcare providers, there are 17 who have at least a one-star rating, which leaves 36 providers who have not yet achieved that level of quality. Because the other part of my job is to make sure that we can connect families to quality early learning experiences, I wanted to bring to your attention the idea that there are 36 childcare providers who have not yet achieved that quality. Currently, those 53 childcare providers are serving about 1,897 children. That means if those 1,897 children lose access to some of the early learning experiences they have, we have to wonder, where will they go? One of the outreach pieces that 4C for Children has done, specifically in the city of Forest Park, is to connect with your local library, and we will be at your local library in January, working with childcare providers to help them in that level of quality. But we did want to inform all of you, because this is not just a problem that surrounds childcare, this is a workforce problem. If families don't have a place to send their children, then families can't go to work. And we're really trying to get ahead of the game. June 30th of 2020 is just a mere 19 months away, and although it seems like a long time, I promise you it'll be here before we all know it. And so, my hope tonight, as I present this information to you, is that you help us spread the word. You help us inform the small businesses in your community, the childcare providers and the families, that quality childcare experiences really do matter, and that we have to start helping them work on this quality rating. So, I've provided to you in your folders, a case study specifically about Forest Park. The front page of that case study is on the right page of your, it's on the right side of your folder, and it talks about the demographics of your community specifically. The next page after that is a map that shows you dots of all of the childcare within the city of Forest Park. When you flip to the next map on the third page, you will see that the dots shrink, and that's because the dots in the second map represent only those providers who are rated. And so, it's just a visual representation for all of us to be very aware of where quality lies and where we can make some improvements. My hope is that on the left side of the folder, you will see a flyer that talks about Step Up to Quality Direct. We offer one-day and four-day sessions to help providers understand the requirements of Step Up to Quality, and we provide coaching services that are free of charge to those small businesses within your community. So, my hope is that as you're out and about talking to your constituents and to your community members, that you can share this information and direct them back to 4C for Children, because we want to support the families and the small businesses within your community. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions, my business card is in the folder.
Thank you for your presentation, and I would ask council to make sure that they review this material, and if they have any questions, they utilize the contact information that you have provided with us, to us, and to contact you. I am aware of this. I did see the program. As a matter of fact, I was invited to see that program. The only additional comment I would add was that apparently some of the people, some of the daycare agencies that do not have stars, even one star, very few are, not just in Forest Park, but they, there's a reluctance on the part of some to do what's necessary to get those stars, not knowing that by not qualifying, they won't continue to be able to provide daycare. And also, that most, or a lot of these will more directly impact those people who can less afford daycare, because without the star ratings, they won't qualify for assistance. So, it's very important that they understand that, and that they do what is necessary to make sure that they come into compliance. Again, thank you very much for coming to us, and again, as with the other group, we will, you know, you don't have to stay. We appreciate your coming. You're welcome to stay if you like, but it's not mandatory. Thank you. We would now move to item number five, reports of standing committees. The first of those standing committees would be Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I just wanted to talk about one project of the Environmental Awareness Committee. For the past few years, we've been partnering with Wynton Woods High School's art teachers to encourage students to explore environmental issues through art. And for the last couple of years, we have created award winners that we've posted their visual art in the municipal building. And this year, we also have added a project that they did in 3D sculptures to sculpt endangered species. All of that artwork is in our lobby. I would invite people to take a look at it. It's all very, very interesting, and we wanted to recognize those students and congratulate those winners. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing now, Councilwoman Herbie, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session on the 10th, and that item involves the renovation of the Plaza on Northland Boulevard. The next committee reporter is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor. However, I would, this 4C opportunity, seems like it's something that we should be discussing. Considering that less than 50% of our current daycare providers have a rating, that could negatively impact our parents, the quality of student that is entering our school district, as well as potential income tax, financial issues with the city. This is my understanding. And it may be a long-term issue for a short-term effort, but I would ask that we possibly ask staff, or ask Ray, to appoint someone into staff to possibly partner with the school district, and 4C to understand how we can help facilitate the information sharing, because it's not something that we can require, but we can definitely share. And maybe talk about that in the next work session.
Okay. I will add that to the work session, with the understanding that if it takes longer than a week to get that information, we move it. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none. Our next committee is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report from the Law Committee at this time. However, I am available for questions.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing now, Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 10th. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time.
Next committee report is Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a human resource report tonight, but as the liaison for the Beautification Committee, it is that time again, the annual holiday decoration contest. This year is gonna be on Wednesday, December 12th, starting at 7:00 p.m. If you're interested in having your house viewed, you can find the entry forms on the Forest Park website, or you can call the city at (513) 595-5202. And these forms should be completed and turned in not later than December 10th. With that, we look forward to going around and finding a lot of houses decorated and lighting up the city of Forest Park. With that, that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
I do not, thank you.
Next report, Public Improvements and Facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time, but I would like to remind the public that we will have breakfast with Santa at Frisces on Wynton Road this Saturday, November 8th, at 10 o'clock, so we hope everyone come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none. Councilwoman Moore, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to put on the agenda support with the Hamilton County Public Health and the letter of recommendation for Tobacco 21 policy support.
Okay, Tobacco 21. Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Next committee report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
I do not have a formal report at this time. Do want to remind people that Christmas tree, if they intend to purchase a Christmas tree, that they're mindful of it needing to be watered. We know that that can be a potential fire hazard. Also, on November 19th, I had the opportunity to volunteer at the Wynton Woods High School in their Finance 101 event, along with our community response specialist, Evers, and it was a very nice event. I was very impressed. It was designed to demonstrate to students how, you know, real-life situations happen, and how it can affect their financial situation. And so, it was very nice. We had a number of community volunteers that, you know, led the students around that workshop. So, did enjoy that, and that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing now, Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda for you for the 10th. Do you have anything to add?
I do not, sir.
I want to go back, Councilwoman Moore. Just to ask you to, if you would, comment on tonight's event over at the senior stadium.
Okay, thank you. It was our first time having the event in a new location, and we're excited that the residents and the students came out from Wynton Woods to support our event, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you. Next committee report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communications. It's my committee. I have no report. I'll answer any questions, if there are any. Hearing none. I would move to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just, I'd like to report briefly that, first of all, to thank the Parks and Recreation Commission and the staff, who worked to put on the tree light, our tree lighting celebration. And I would like to thank all of the council members who were able to attend that. I think it's very important that the public sees us supporting our children and our community. So, thanks to everybody who took part, and most importantly, thanks to all of the young people and their parents and or guardians, or whoever, for bringing them out. That will conclude my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report that we are in the process of removing the brush and tree limbs from the last storm, as we had previously scheduled. This week will be the last week, we actually were doing it two weeks, so this is the second week, that we'll be doing that, so we're encouraging any residents that have any of the remaining brush on their property, if they bring it to the curb, we will remove it. I'll also report that we have completed the departmental reports. We included it in the council packet. We also placed it on file with Clerk of Council for public inspection. That would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions, if there are any.
Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none. Move to item number eight, other reports, first of those being Law Director, Mr. Wyko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I did approve the broker services agreement for the Highland Group, who is providing risk management services for the city. Also, I'm following up on an issue the police department is having with a local guns dealer. You might recall that we had some inventory of guns, and the court gave us an order to dispose of those guns. The intent was to trade those in for needed rifles. Unfortunately, the man has now gone out of business, so we're trying to retrieve the guns that he hasn't sold, and the money that he did get from those that he did sell, so... And then, for the finance department, specifically the finance director, I answered three of her requests for legal opinions. One was a contract review with Yahoo Attorney General's Office for collection services, the same with a law firm known as Wiener and Associates, and then also, an opinion regarding the city's ability to pass on collection costs, including attorney's fees, on a post-judgment basis. That is the end of my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question for Law Director? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Next report, Clerk of Council, Mrs. Druck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers 26 and 27-2018, and resolution numbers 32 through 35-2018 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda would be a motion. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinance numbers 28-2018 through 32-2018. and read by title only ordinance numbers 28-2018 through 32-2018. These ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinance number 28-2018 through 32-2018. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 7-0. New business item number, item number nine is new business. First item on the new business is item A, ordinance number 28-2018. Would the clerk please read that by title only?
Ordinance number 28-2018, making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Forest Park, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number 28-2018.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 28-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, and I'm going to try to be brief here.
Please.
This is our annual budget resolution, and I wanted to indicate that it is structurally balanced. We did face a challenge because of some shortfall in tax collections, both because of a decline in some of the, some of our large employers. We've replaced those, but not a number of people. And then also because of some decline in the multi-jurisdictional business taxes that are being collected at the state. And we've made cuts across the board to try to bring this into balance, but we are going to have to probably face next year some decisions about what to do in the out years. So I would urge adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 28-2018?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ordinance 28-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number 29-2018. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 29-2018, an ordinance establishing a for the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 29-2018.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 29-2018. Is there, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would also move to amend ordinance number 29-2018 to insert in the title "And declaring an emergency", and in Section 7, "This ordinance," and delete the following, "shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest date allowable by law," and insert, "is hereby declared an emergency measure necessary for the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Forest Park in that the funds provided for the orderly financing and the charging of fees as related to the items listed above shall take effect immediately upon its passage."
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
The ordinance 29-2018 has been amended to make it, to declare it an emergency. Is there a discussion on the amendment?
I don't have any assistance on this, but usually when we do this kind of thing, declaring an emergency, it's because it is necessary for these things to go into effect in a timely manner, and that's what I would assume is the reasoning behind this.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to amend ordinance number 29-2018.
You can't, you can't make a motion when, on an amendment that we are currently discussing. This amendment has to be dealt with first, and then if you had another amendment, then you'd have to make it after that. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
We have to act on this one first.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the amendment? If there's no further discussion on the amendment.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
The amendment passes 6 to 1. We are now on the amended motion. Any discussion on the amended motion prior to the vote?
Are you referring?
No, no.
Well, no, not the, well, you want the main motion, right?
The main motion does not exist. It's been amended. Yes. Do you have discussion on the amended motion? Or is there any other, yeah, discussion on the amended motion? Yes?
This is our annual update to our fee schedule for various things, and it is reviewed annually with additions and corrections that may be proposed. And this year, the proposal from staff is to have a $100 refundable deposit for rental of the senior center. One of the things we've been experiencing is that people are supposed to return the senior center to what they, the way they found it, and that's not happening, so it's causing some additional staff cost, and so this helps to cover that. And so I would urge adoption of this motion as amended.
Is there any other discussion on the amended motion? Any other discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyckoff, before I take the vote on that, would this be the time when it would be in order for anyone else to offer an amendment?
Can I ask a question first before somebody? Am I reading this wrong? What it says here, the only update for 29 is a proposed $100 refundable deposit. And the way she explained it is you're going to keep $100.
If they, it's refundable if, if they, if they replace it and return it to the way it was when they got it. If they don't, then a portion of that may not be refunded.
So they're making the refunded amount less than what it was?
No, this is the institution of a new charge that when you, when you, when you hire a reserve, the senior center, you pay a certain fee, you would have to have this additional refundable deposit. This will be held. If you return this to the status that you found it, then the whole amount would be refunded to you. If you do not, then a portion of it would be kept.
So now instead of paying $700 or $800, you're going to have to pay $900 in order to rent the senior?
Yes.
And it's refundable if you clean it up, basically is what it means. Mr. Wyckoff? Would this be the time for anybody to offer any additional amendments before we vote on it? Okay. As directed, as instructed or told by the Law Director, if anyone has any additional amendments to add, this would be the time when those additional amendments that should be offered.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I move that we amend ordinance number 29-2018 to strike park shelters and grove per four-hour session, four-hour reservation, $25 for resident, $25, $50 for non-resident, and $25 for business from ordinance 20-2018, whereas in instituting those charges for park.
Hold on, wait a minute. You can't discuss it until after the motion, after you've offered the motion and it receives a second.
Okay.
And just so, you know, and you need to make your motion clear so that it's understood by everybody what it is you're proposing to do with your motion is. I'm not going to try to say what I think you said, so let's, just tell us what it is you want removed.
I move to strike parks, the, the fees for park shelter and grove per four-hour reservation. That reads $25 for resident, $50 for non-resident, and $25 for business. I move to strike it from the fee schedule.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Because there is no second, then the motion would die as a lack of a second. So in that event, then we would move to vote on the amended main motion. Would the clerk please call the roll on the amended main motion?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilwoman Ness, I didn't hear your.
Yes.
Okay, so as I understand it, there was two no votes and five yes? So the motion passes. The next item on the agenda would be item C, ordinance number 30, 30-2018. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 30-2018, amending annual 2018 appropriation ordinance, 27-2018.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 30-2018.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 30-2018. Is there a discussion on the ordinance? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this is also a yearly, a year-end item that we do. Generally, sometimes within certain departments, there may be some things that go slightly over budget, and so we generally will rearrange things within the budget from one line item to another. We had some unexpected increases to initialize this new credit card collection vendor in the Police Department Court system, and some unexpected expenses in stormwater, but all of that's covered within the line items. I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion on 30-2018? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on 30-2018?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda would be item D, ordinance number 31-, yeah, D, this would be yours, 31-2018. This is not a vote. Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 31-2018, an ordinance appointing John Earl Wyckoff, attorney-at-law, as solicitor, law director, and prosecutor, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
This is the first reading. This item would be on the agenda for vote at the meeting on the 17th. Next item on the agenda is item E, ordinance number 32-2018. The clerk please read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 32-2018, an ordinance appointing Darren E. Nye, attorney-at-law, as public defender, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision.
Again, this item E is a first reading, and this item as well will be on the agenda for vote on the, on December 17th. Next item is a motion. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only Resolution Numbers 36-2018 through 40-2018.
Second.
These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend? Hearing none. Would the clerk please read, please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
The motion to suspend passes 7-0. First item on the resolution is item F, Resolution Number 36-2018. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 36-2018, amending the salary-setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of Resolution Number 36-2018.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt Resolution Number 36-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this is a year-end resolution setting the rates for our civil and non-civil employees, civil service employees. And as per our contracts with one of our unions, this, this is reflective of a 2% across the board increase. And the other two unions, there is no action at this time because they are currently going into negotiations. And so I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 36-2018?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Resolution 36-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item G, Resolution 37-2018. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 37-2018, a resolution amending the designation of depositories by city council and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with those depository agencies.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would urge adoption of resolution, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 37-2018.
Second.
Moving in second that we adopt Resolution 37-2018. Is there a discussion?
As mentioned in my discussion about the budget, the mayor's court asked to add a second credit card processor for online payments, and this is to update that, our depository agreements in order to do that. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on 37-2018.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 37-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 38-2018. The clerk, please call the roll on, I'm sorry, would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 38-2018, revising and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Deborah K. Brown Gaines to serve as magistrate of the city of Forest Park Mayor's Court.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the passage of Resolution 38-2018.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 38-2018. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, similar to the Law Director, reappointment for the magistrate is an annual event. Unlike the Law Director, however, this requires a resolution for approval. The magistrate arrangement for 2019 compensation will be $20,933.78, paid in monthly payments or such as agreed to by the Finance Director and the magistrate. This equates to roughly a 2% increase from 2018. I would urge passage of Resolution 38-2018.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 38-2018?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Resolution 38-2018 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item I, Resolution 39-2018. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 39-2018, a resolution opposing substitute House Bill 228, which is Ohio's version of the Stand Your Ground House Bill law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Ness?
Yes, I motion, I motion, ooh, excuse me, can't speak. I motioned that we adopt this. Substitute Bill 228.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution 39-2018. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Ness?
Yes, just briefly, as stated before, when we first, or when I first brought this up, we know that the, this bill expands the, what we, what we would call the Castle Doctrine, and the duty to retreat is no longer at play here, and when being confronted in terms of self-defense, self-defense rather. So it also proposes changes to Ohio's carrying concealed weapon law and expands those circumstances, like I said, where the person has no duty to retreat and can therefore use lethal force resulting in, you know, resulting in death. So I do believe that this is a very dangerous bill with the landscape right now. I think that it's most certainly not good for vigilante justice and folks taking things into their own hands, and so this was, I think, is a very good protective measure that we, that we stand against this actual stand your version, or rather, stand your ground expansion bill. And so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Mr. Burns, question?
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand the passage of this.
Well, well, we're.
Let's hear his question first.
With the passage of this, from a process perspective, and this may be more directed to the clerk or to the dais, what happens to this resolution? Because does it, is it sent to the state? Is it sent, what happens to it?
It gets sent to the state representatives.
And senators.
That are in our area, and the governor.
Okay.
Representing portions of Hamilton County and, and the governor, and all it is is saying that we as.
I just want to make sure.
Who it goes to.
Who it goes to, because oftentimes resolutions are filed and acted upon as opposed to sent and communicated. So I just want to make sure I understand.
That does state in here that I have to send it out.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 39-2018 passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is resolution J, resolution 40, item J, resolution 40-2018. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number 40-2018, a resolution to place liens, to place a lien against the residential property at 805 Halesworth Drive, declared a public nuisance and demolished by the City of Forest Park, to recover the total cost of city action to remediate the unsafe conditions.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the passage of resolution 40-2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 40-2018. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, as indicated by the title, this is an administrative measure to ensure that the city, at the city's expense to demolish the residence at 805 Halesworth Drive is recouped at the point of sale of that particular property. With that, I would urge the passage of resolution number 40-2018.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 40-2018?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Resolution 40-2018 passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item K, a motion. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we appoint Counselor Rosalyn Moore to the OKI Board of Trustees for the term commencing 1/10/19.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we appoint Councilwoman Rosalyn Moore to the OKI Board of Trustees for the term commencing 1/10/19. Is there any discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye.
Aye.
Posped. By unanimous vote, Councilwoman Moore is appointed to the OKI Board of Trustees. Next item on the agenda is item L. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to make a motion to convene to an executive session to review the performance evaluation of the city manager, Law Director, and the Clerk of Court, I mean Council.
Second.
Been moved in second that we convene into executive session to review the performance evaluation of city manager, Law Director, and Clerk of Council. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to convene into executive session?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
So we're going to convene, convene into executive session, and there will be no official business taken during this executive session.
Mr. Mayor, before we convene into executive session, I think I may have inadvertently voted the wrong direction on 28-28, no, 29-2018. If the, what, to tell us, I think I misunderstood the second, it's on the fee schedule.
Mr. Wycoff, what's the process for changing a recorded vote?
Thirty-plus years I've never had that question, so bear with me.
I've only had it once, but I wanted to check it with you. While you're checking, John, my understanding is that it's allowed to be done, especially since it would not affect the outcome of the vote. I mean, the, it would not flip the vote.
Yeah, it looks like it's up to the chairman here. Let me see.
Right. That's what Kathy told me. Long time ago. In, in that event, then I would declare that the vote be changed, and that would, and that would make the vote four-three. Still, the motion would pass. At this point, we would convene into executive session. I would point out to you that you have in front of you a, an envelope that you will need in time, when we, Denise, when we go in there, everybody should have theirs, in the event that you didn't bring yours with you.